Call the study session of May 22, 2012 to order. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that council members, Rzansky and Deagle, are currently absent.
Clarification of items on the consent calendar, Councilman Hen.
I have none.
Councilman Selich?
None.
Councilman Hill?
None, thank you.
Mayor Protem Curry?
Yes.
I have one. Number thirteen. My recollection, based on nothing except something I heard at some point, that we were trying to get sidewalks completed on the avenues in Corona Del Mar. And we seem to have pieces of them. And sometimes when a house is remodeled, we get some sidewalk, and then other times houses are remodeled and we don't get sidewalk. And I'm confused as to whether there is any kind of policy that we're trying to do this. And if so, what sort of thing determines who gets sidewalk and who doesn't?
As I understand it, there is a policy that talks about critical lengths of sidewalk, and we identify those and we always check for those. And then, as I understand it, in Corona Del Mar, this particular link is not a critical. And we have walkways generally on the flowered streets, north and south, but on the numbered streets, they're not as prevalent. And in this case, this is almost across from Oasis. It has existing landscaping in it. And there were some tree issues, I believe, on this case, so they chose not to put the sidewalk in there.
Okay. But I guess I would like somebody to think about this a bit, because I know from my own experience, and I've been contacted by residents, it's not the safest thing. I mean, if you can walk in a straight line, you're fine. But most people don't walk in straight lines, and most people may not have to go down to Marguerite, where there's a great big wide sidewalk. If you've got kids in strollers or anything, and you're on those avenues, you don't have any distance from cars. So I would like us to really look closely, and in any case that we possibly can, to try for sidewalks there, so we can improve some of the safety. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I do have a question on item number five, on the amendment to the parking meter. I understand there's a whole paragraph or two in there on the maintenance issue. Are we very clear with the vendor that they are totally responsible for maintenance and the identification of malfunctioning meters, and that that is not a responsibility of the city?
Hi, Tracy McCrainer, Finance Director. Yes, that's very clear in the scope of services that they have to maintain. All parking meter equipment, they even are responsible for all signage, striping, anything that goes along with the program.
And that holds true even though we are now purchasing the equipment?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, while we're talking about the consent calendar, I want to let you know that we would, the staff is going to be recommending, removing the SEA Act recommendations from the consent calendar, because it's something we probably were, you know, we wanted to make a brief presentation about it, and I'm sure you'll want to talk about that.
Yes.
Okay. Kim Brandt has a comment.
On consent, item number ten, I just wanted to correct the Planning Commission's report of their activities from May 17th for item number three, which was the continuance on Newport Banning Ranch. The vote was incorrectly noted in your staff packet. The vote was five to one on the continuance of June 21st with Commissioner Hillbrand voting no.
Thank you. All right. And now we're ready for our CIP budget presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. So this is your second look, and this is the more formal look at the capital improvement program as proposed by staff for fiscal year 2012-13. We're going to be doing something a little bit different from what you're used to be doing. After we make a majority of the presentation, and this is at the advice of the city attorney, we'll be speaking, to some extent, about neighborhood revitalization. And in that case, we've set up the program so that three council members who have potential financial conflicts in that will be asked to step away. And then, we'll talk with the other four council members at that time, and then the rest of the council can come back. So bear with us as we do this. It's under the city attorney's advice. And we don't think we, we think we have it pretty close to how it's going to work, but don't be surprised when that comes up.
So you're going to have all three go at the same time, rather than leave during the discussion of what they have the conflict on?
Yeah, basically, we're going to group them together, all the neighborhood revitalization project items, for discussion on those. Because there's potential issues with inclusion or non-inclusion of various projects under the Political Reform Act. And just to kind of supplement what City Manager Kiff was saying, there's a public generally exception, which generally applies to all capital improvement programs, where you wouldn't necessarily need to recuse yourselves. In this case, we're looking for specific guidance regarding those revitalization projects. And while we don't believe there is a conflict, I think out of an abundance of caution, the council members, after discussing this matter, have decided to go ahead and recuse themselves from hearing those items.
So with that, I'm going to have Deputy Public Works Director Dave Webb do a presentation about the CIP.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. We'll be speaking to, particularly you were given this draft document, most of the projects are in here identified, but there are some changes that we'll speak to, and this draft has other things that are going to be changed on the checklist. Additionally, you were sent out a PowerPoint, and as City Manager Dave Kiff mentioned, there are some changes to the PowerPoint you saw, and we'll see those today. And what I'll do is I'll just kind of slowly go through, and I'll take a pause at slides if you like, and we can ask questions along the way, or at the end, as you feel fit. So today, we're talking about our capital improvement program, and for the public's enjoyment, they might not know why exactly we do a capital improvement program. But we develop this document every year as part of the budget, and it really serves to develop and construct major public improvements. It helps us address significant maintenance items that come up. It allows us to set priorities and appropriate funds for projects, provides a basis for planning, and helps to identify potential conflicts in our budget. And then, again, this budget is a continually evolving document, responds to changes and priorities as the council and other things come up. Our CIPs are selected in many ways. Probably our largest way is we have a series of master plans, and we look at our master plans every year, and we identify projects. In this case, we have the facilities master plan, the pavement management master plan, water, sewer, streetlight. And we go through theirs and identify a project, put in for funding. We also develop projects out of council priorities and goals and objectives. Some projects come out of the community and staff, and others come out of federal state requirements or legal actions that have taken place. This here is a copy of our current pavement master plan. I put that in. This is the latest version. And this particular year coming up is basically the green. And this is also available on our Public Works website. You can look at any time to see when your streets are subject to. It goes out multiple years. So in this case, as we come up, we'll be looking particularly at the green streets next year.
Dave, I thought we were also going to do some Newport Coast streets this year. They look like they're not green.
Well, I believe. We have some red that we just completed. We have some projects going on right now. Red is this current year, Fashion Island, you see, you see Corona Del Mar, and there are some streets up in Newport Coast. A lot of Newport Coast is private, so you should see that.
So Harbor Ridge Drive, and Newport Coast, and up there, and Pelican Hills, north and south, they were done this year?
I believe they're a part of our slurry program, which is the same as this one here.
Okay, so that's already done this year?
Correct. And then you'll see streets with no color on them, particularly those are private associations, that they take care of their own streets. The other thing we'd like to do in our master plan is address council priorities. And in a couple this year that we really focused in on, we had revitalization of various areas. And we use the CIP to develop rehabilitation projects that can address aging infrastructure. We look at ways to improve traffic flow, also ways to put in new or improved landscaping. We can also use it to encourage private development. We can do improvements that might help revitalize an area. Also, building parks, recreational facilities, and undergrounding utilities on major arterials is also included in here. Another council priority this year was title and management. And in here, you'll find areas of dredging, the effort. We have currently the ongoing dredging, but there's additional efforts in here. Continuing to improve water quality, we have projects to repair and maintain our beaches, bulkheads, and seawalls, and also make improvements in some city facilities, in this case, the Baboa Yacht Basin. Just real quick, looking back at the year we're completing, this last year, we're looking, we're unscheduled to complete sixteen of our planned projects. About $13 million will be delivered. We have performance goals in Public Works. Two of them are basically that we want to complete 85 percent of our projects within two months of our baseline schedule, which we make every July. This year, we're coming in about 88 percent, which is above our percentage. The other one we have is to complete 90 percent of our projects when the contract amount plus 10 percent, our contingency amount. This one, we're at 81 percent this year. We've been well over 90 in the last years, but the 81 percent is almost a good thing, because as you've seen, a lot of the awards come through, we've asked for additional contingencies, 10, 15 percent, because we're getting such bids that we'd like to take advantage of those low prices. So oftentimes, we will ask for a little more contingency if we see some opportunities. I know in the particular one, we just did a concrete job down on Central Peninsula area, down by Island Avenue, and we had enough savings in that, and we had such low concrete bids that we did Harding Street, which is right next to, it wasn't a planned street, we'll be able to capture additional repairs on the same cost.
Yeah, Dave, just a comment. It seems to me that your measurement there is a little defective. I mean, if we approve a project with a 15 percent contingency, and you come in at 12 percent, you've done your job. But it shows up as a failure on this measurement. Is that right?
Yeah, and that's why the number's misleading. On a typical-
Yeah, so I think what we need to do is change your measurement to be, you know, to within the approved contingency, as opposed to a straight 10 percent. Seems to me that that's the better measurement here.
And we could look at that. 10 percent's pretty typical. We have actually asked for higher contingencies in a real good bid. So I'd sure be look at that. We'll see if we can get a better-
Just trying to help you here.
Performance measure. Thank you. In addition to the projects that are completed, there's also a whole percentage of projects that are ongoing. They're encumbered right now. They don't show up as new programs, but they are going on. And these are lists of some of the big ones. City Hall, obviously, we're doing the Civic Center. Marina Park and Sunset Ridge are both actively being pursued. Jamboree Road Bridge is going to be done in here about July, as that's on schedule. Peninsula Point Alley Project, a large concrete project on the point, is underway. Landscape improvements and some of the other ones there. And that's just to note, we have $78 million of that type of work ongoing right now that don't show up as new projects. So then we get into this, next year's budget. And in this budget, we're looking to program $51.5 million. There's 57 projects in there. $19 million roughly in new funding, and $31 million in rebudget. And I wanted to stop on rebudget just a little bit, because I know that feels like there's a lot of money going over the calendar year. But it's important to understand the capital improvement program doesn't stop at June and start in July. There's a lot of work that continues on. And a lot of these rebudgets in here are projects either that have been awarded since the budget you have was put together in March, or are on the cusp of being awarded. Some of them, for instance, Bay Avenue, we have $2 million in there that we were going to award this last year, but the residents wanted some additional modifications to look at parking and some tree inclusions. So it allowed us to have to push it over. We don't want to construct it in the summer, so we moved it over the year. We have the two park projects, and they're Marina Park and Sunset Ridge, which are probably $15 million, $10 million combined. There's a lot of that money that shows up in the rebudgets. So that number is deceiving as a big number, but there's a lot of work running with that. And then we want to include this slide that kind of shows where we've been on our 10-year CIP funding. The various funding amounts, we have the new money, the readjusted money. And the large spike on the top is basically our adjusted budget, and that was last year when we added the Civic Center project. That differs usually, because those projects are brought in and adjusted mid-years in appropriation, and not necessarily shown in the budget when it starts. So in our budget, we have various categories, and our first one is facilities. And this year, we're looking at doing $3.3 million worth in our facilities. Some of the highlighted projects in there are the Baboa Yacht Basin facility painting. We need to repaint that building. Big Canyon Reservoir Maintenance Yard, we're looking at trying to do an auxiliary yard over there as we consolidate and provide some better support on the east side of the bay. Central Library HVAC system needs refurbishment. Also, looking at this facility, shut this down would be one of the projects in there to close this out. And then, the lifeguard headquarters rehabilitation, which you actually will see the award of the design contract tonight.
All right. But we're not, that says construction. And my understanding, I thought, was that we were, had decided to hold off on that, and we were just going to do design. Is that correct?
That is correct, Mayor, although that is an option coming up later tonight that you'll vote on. But as this was put together in here, we planned on constructing it this year. Next category, Streets and Drainage. In this category, we have about $16 million programmed, 13.5 in streets, and another 2.8 in drainage. And our streets are broken up in different categories. We have arterial streets, which are the larger streets for the public's knowledge. It's the Newport Boulevards, the McCarthers, the Jamborees. In this case, we're looking at Baboa Boulevard, Channel Road. We're going to do the new concrete pavement out there. That pavement's in really bad shape, and we've programmed to replace it all this year. Bayside Drive repavement, we want to look at that, or it's one of the green lines shown on the pavement management plan. Jamboree Road widening, this would be north of the bridge that's currently being widened now into Newport, and also just some point repairs. And then, we have a couple OCTA projects. Newport Boulevard, 32nd Street right out here is an awarded OCTA project. And then, Old Newport Boulevard, Coast Highway is one we're looking to do some design work on.
What's a point repair?
I'm sorry, a point repair. We have various areas. There's one, a point repair, what we call it would be-
Just a minute, Dave.
Go ahead, answer, answer. No, answer the city manager.
A point repair. We have a lot of little areas that fail, like, for instance, there's a left turn lane on Jamboree Road going onto Coast Highway. There's a couple on Newport Coast Road up on the top, where we have some ravelling going on, where the bicyclists have asked us to address. So they're just kind of spots all around the city we're trying to catch with this project, along, I think Bristol South is in this project, too.
On Newport Boulevard, 32nd Street, we have the approved conceptual master plan for the reutilization of this site, and with that is an extensive landscape plan. And I would hate to see anything take place in design that would be contrary to what has been looked at as a potential improvement of this property here. We don't want to make a change and then come back and have to change it again. We should take advantage of these other public funds to achieve the plan that we're talking about.
Yes, and absolutely. This plan is actually envisioned, and we have the design engineer on, and we gave him the Lido Village design guidelines, and we've asked them to incorporate that landscaping into there, which would go from 30th all the way down to Via Lido. We'd be looking at to replace the medians, maybe add street trees as part of the project, because we will be adjusting the striping. Actually, also trying to take advantage of that project to provide better turnpocket movements in and out of the site. Some of the street improvements, this is our local streets, and this really includes the overlay programs, the slurry programs, Bay Avenue concrete, local streets, Central Avenue, Newport, there's some alley replacement. This has to do with the Underground District 100 that we're just finishing, so this will be the alley replacement. And then, we have our annual sidewalk repairs that are going on. Just to note that the sidewalk and curb replacements are usually preceding the slurry seals. So, for instance, we're doing Corona Del Mar right now on the concrete, and then the slurry will come in behind it to cover up all the scars.
When we do those, do we also do the ADA if they're not already there?
We try to catch any ADA requests or needs in that area at the time. And I think we put some CBDG money in this year's sidewalk program to catch some ADA improvements, specifically down by Baboa Pavilion. In drainage improvements, we have China Cove. This is a carryover project on the maintenance of that slope. We hope to get that out this fall. We have a lot of tide gates we're retrofitting and replacing with an automatic tide gate. It's saving a lot of labor on our maintenance front. And then, we've got some storm drain interceptors. These are trash separators, basically, that go in, and these are actually from OCTA funding. We've been successful in some grants on that, and we'll be putting those in. And then, storm drain system repairs and lining. We've also identified several old corrugated metal pipes in the city that probably need lining. We've had a couple last year that have failed over on Galaxy and Bamboo and stuff, and it kind of brought it to our attention. So we want to hit those before we have any more failures. Under our traffic program this year, we're looking to put 1.7 million into the capital improvements. The highlighted projects are East Coast Highway Signals. These are the signals we inherited from Caltrans several years ago, basically from Jamboree out to Newport Coast. They're starting to show a lot of signs of wear, so we hope to start the design of that, and then maybe next year, do the replacement. I'm trying to work on that section of roadway, because I think we're going to come up to a pavement job here in the next three or four years, and it's, we're trying to get all the underground done. Traffic signal modernization, Phase Six will be programmed in this year. And also, we do two or three traffic signal rehabilitations every year, and that'll be ongoing this year. On the note of traffic signal modernization, several years ago, this council had staff really accelerate this program and wanted to put some emphasis on it. So I'm happy to report, you can see here the various completions. Phase One, Two, Three, Four, Seven, and Five are all complete now, and there's only Six and Eight left. So those are various completion dates and what's been taken care of there. Phase Six will be addressed this year. We have some OCTA funding that'll help us out on that. And then, Phase Eight will be started in fall of 2013. That's really San McGill. Beneath the Canyon and Ford are going to be actually addressed with the City of Irvine. They've got some Measure M months from OCTA, and they're going to do those portions of the street for us, and we'll just be writing staff labor for them. Under our Parks, Harbors, and Beaches, we're going to put in about $17.2 million. The Baboa Marina Public Dock, we have a match portion of that in with the Irvine Company to develop and look into getting the sequoada done and the permitting for that project. We want to put in some additional funds into the Bay Beaches and Sand Management. That's been an item we've been talking a lot about lately. And then, eelgrass mapping and surveys included in that.
Dave, why is this number so high, if those are the only three things on the list, mostly rebudgets?
Let me look real quick. I believe it is. I think the dredging number is in there.
The dredging, I think, might be.
Marina Park is also shown in here. Yes, there's $6 million in there, and then Sunset Ridge Park is in this, too. So, oh, sorry. So there's the other projects that are in the park budgets I just mentioned. Marina Park and Sunset are large dollars, and that's really what's driving that number up. There's some other small projects in there. Also note, the seawall and bulkhead project, I believe there's $500,000. This is actually to start the Baboa Island discussion and the engineering. I think the whole cost of that'll be a little higher. We're just looking at proposals right now. We'll bring that back to council and the Titleings Committee to talk about in more detail.
Dave, assuming we're successful with the Coastal Commission next month for Marina Park, what would be the schedule for moving forward on that project?
If we're, hopefully, we're going to be successful. It's looking very positive in what we're reading back. We're- We're scheduled to go in June, and that would probably start our 90-day notice, we're looking to probably start that in fall, and I think the schedule calls for us getting underway in construction around January 1st, if it all goes well.
And I think one of the things we need to be careful of is with the Seawall and Bulkhead modifications, things that are coming under the Tytland's Management Committee, that we don't somehow double-book them and look like we're spending more money than we are. Because we have pulled a couple, we noticed a couple of things when we were going over the Tytland's Management List, that were already in the CIP.
You're correct, and I believe that's actually funded out of Tytland's, if I recall, but we will do that. Water Quality Environmental is another category we have. In here, there's about $1.5 million in Big Canyon, which I believe is an Irvine Company contribution, and then we have some grant money in Newport Coast, which covers doing some work in Crystal Cove State Park, some design work, so they can do some water quality elements and a various slew of other items in that program. Water System, we have $8.9 million budgeted this year. 16th Street Pond Station and the wells, VFDs, is variable frequency drives. This is a project that you might have saw the email from Eddie Marquez talking about the energy savings. This project basically changes out the wellheads to a variable speed drive, which yields energy savings for us when it's working at different operating pressures. We also have Big Canyon Reservoir Floating Cover in here, which we accelerated it up due to the issues we're having, and Coronel Mar Water Transmission Main is going to be running from the Big Canyon Reservoir down to Coronel Mar to provide fire protection and other needs in there.
So where does it come? Big Canyon, how many streets are going to be affected?
That main runs down, basically, out of the reservoir, comes down San Miguel to MacArthur, MacArthur down to Coast Highway, and connects, I want to say, and right at Dalia or maybe Carnation.
So it's going to affect major traffic? And we're going to be out there really in front, letting people know and having, maybe we get our signs up at San Maken Hills, so we can divert traffic that would be coming down and that sort of thing?
Absolutely. We'll do changeable message signs and lots of advanced public notice on that. Wastewater Program this year is rather small, there's just a few things. We have some diversions in Big Canyon and the port streets, has to do with water quality and selenium. St. James Road, there's a sewer relocation just below it. And then we have various point repairs, that we'll be doing various lining projects throughout the city. And we're also looking at doing a wastewater master plan rate study and analyst of the program this year. We'll probably bring that to the finance committee and then to council. One of the miscellaneous programs is still the Santa Ana Heights undergrounding. I have to report, the last pole, I believe, is being taken down this week. We've been really pushing on that to get Edison done with that. The next step will now to be repave all the streets. Mr. Kiff and I have been working with Mr. Hill to work on the county to make sure the funds are available for that, and I think we're in pretty good shape. I'm hearing pretty positive results back in the county. This has to do with redevelopment funds, because this house, the money was programmed out of a county redevelopment. So here's a summary of what we're looking at in the proposed CIP, as you saw it in the book that came to you. The breakdown of various funds, facilities, as we went through, with a total of $51.5 million basically being programmed this year.
Dave, roughly, how much of that is rebudget or budget associated with the Civic Center? So I guess what we're talking about here is the spending going from July 1, 2012 forward, right?
Yeah.
And we're expecting to be done with the Civic Center by year-end, essentially. I mean, do you have any feeling for that?
Actually, this number doesn't include the Civic Center, that's under an ongoing encumbrance, that $78 million I showed you earlier.
See, that's, yeah, it just sort of seems like the Civic Center just goes on and never shows up in the numbers. It was a mid-year, it was a mid-year appropriation last year, right?
Yes, it was, and as you saw when I pointed out the 10-year trend, the slide, where the adjusted budget peaks, because we added it to it, but it doesn't show up in the budget you approved last year or this year directly, because it's encumbered.
Yeah.
So Dave, why don't you explain again what a rebudget is something different from a previous encumbrance?
Yes, a rebudget in this case is something that we planned on doing, it's in the budget that didn't get started, approved by council this year, it's moving over the calendar year. A good example would be, for instance, one of our pavement jobs, I think we just, we've got one coming, or Bay Avenue is a great example. We were going to do it this year, it's several million dollars, but as you know, with the residents changing the parking relationships and the streets, we didn't want to do it in the summer, so we chose to, let's just wait till fall. That causes that money to be carried over and rebudgeted. So that's what you'll see in here with rebudgets. Some of them are placeholders, like, for instance, there's $1.5 million from the Irvine Company for the Big Canyon watershed. It's a grant to us, and we haven't allocated it yet, so it's just sitting in the budget.
Yeah, so the difficulty is, because that was a, it was not included in the original budget last year, the Civic Center, it got approved sort of mid-year. I'm not raising a problem with the spending, or, you know, or the project, of course, it's just, to me, it's a good example where, when we do a look back on the public works projects, the capital spending for the city, though, at some point, that spending needs to show up, right? I mean-
It's a good point, because that's one of the items we talked-
It just seems like it doesn't show up, as we're-
I know the workload's there.
The workload's there. Sure, there is. I know, I know that, and I know we approved it, and it was all approved properly and everything, but when we're just trying to do a look back, you know, it's, I'm sure there are other things a lot like that, that just arise, they get handled, and-
I'm thinking out loud here, one of the ways maybe to handle it is to have a slide like this, but that has ongoing encumbrances that are active, that remain active, and that really would give you a scope for the size of any one year's capital program.
Yeah, see, because I think what happens is, this really actually significantly understates the amount of work that's going on in the city, doesn't it?
It does, and that's why we tried to put that one, I probably ought to have more slides, it was really long, and I didn't want to take up too much of your time.
There's probably another $40 or $50 million associated, of spending and work activity associated with the Civic Center on top of that $51 million, I'm guessing.
There is, and I know historically, it looks like we've done mid-year adjustments or budgets for most of our big facilities. It's probably because you don't want to carry that number in your budget, and, you know, it takes it out of finance investments and things like that, but we could maybe find a better way to represent it.
Yeah, it's just an issue, it's not a major issue, but it just would help me get, you know, a better appreciation, and I think, actually, the public, a better appreciation for the totality of what's going on in this city, which is very, very large.
Thank you for that.
Question for you, Dave. I know we've been working better with Irvine up in the, you mentioned Jamboree, Fairchild area, and as far as Benita Canyon goes, what is the game plan there to work with Irvine? As you go into Ford Road, what do you see as kind of the major challenges as far as traffic in there, and what's your approach to it?
Well, actually, there's, Irvine applied for what they call Project P with OCTA, they applied for a couple grants which go into our city, and Benita Canyon, I believe, Ford Road are the two. What they're going to do is provide the heavy lifting and do the whole work, and we're going to provide staff to bring that project into our city, there's two or three signals there, and we'll work on coordinating with them on that one and the other ones. The other one you're going to see actually tonight is Jamboree Road, where we're doing Jamboree from Newport all the way to Tustin. Irvine's the center city doing most of the work, but we connect with our synchronization at Jamboree, so again, we'll work with them at staff level to make sure the signals talk up and down. But as for construction, like widens and stuff, we're not doing anything with Irvine, other than, we're putting money in this year's budget, $500,000, if I recall, to pay for the portion of Jamboree that's in Newport Beach from, what's it, campus all the way down to MacArthur. They're going to pave the street, they're going to do all the work, and we're just going to reimburse them for the asphalt cost of it.
I've seen their traffic monitoring room, it's extensive, I mean, it's just got lots of camera shots and views and regular personnel in there. Have we ever thought, in terms of having them monitor more of those intersections that sort of connect into their city?
We have, I know our traffic folks talk, and we're not directly connected to their systems. Usually, there's a synchronization break between the two, but this project here, again, these particular roads are going to work together. We don't have too many connections, Jamboree would be another one of those that we'd look at. I don't know if we can physically connect with their system, they probably can view ours, and then you get into, we don't want to give them control, but you want to give them access to view, so we'll look at it.
Just one more thing, and follow up to that last discussion, I guess I would be appreciative, seeing maybe, if it's not too burdensome to figure it out, for the 11, 12 fiscal year and the 12, 13 fiscal year, give me a representation of the total amount of activity that was going on in the city in terms of major projects, you know, capital project work. I'd actually really be curious about that.
We'll see if we can put something together, and we'll send that out to you.
Yeah, don't break a pick over it, but, you know.
See if I can find a budget analyst. We're a little short-staffed, sorry. With that, here's just some overall reviews, and here's the new funds we're looking to appropriate and where they're coming from. You can see the general funds, about $3.6 million, 18% of the budget up there, various funds. These are all the different funds we draw from for the capital improvement program, and that's in your handout. Your next slide here is the total funds, and it kind of shows where the different facilities and types of funding goes to in this budget. And with that, it gets, that's kind of basically the budget we're delivering. At this point, we have basically some council decisions and discussion we'd like to take with you, but maybe before we go to that, were there any other questions on the base budget we talked about that basically brings us to $3.6 million in general fund? So we'll move on to where we're going from there. Knowing where we started with here, and knowing that we have other needs out there, the $3.6 is basically a target level, that's the general fund money we feel available that we can program this year. If you recall, several years ago, I believe it was three, we were doing $1 million a year, we used to do $5 million in general fund, but because of the economy and other things, we cut that back to a million. Last year, we came up to $2 million, and this year, we're believing we can afford $3.6 million in general fund. So what we did here is take a stab at, understanding there's some other requests and other needs out there, we started with basically the $3.6 million on the top here, is what the budget I just showed you, and we look for ways to reduce and add to that that would be, handle some of these needs. And I'll go through each one of these and give you some detail on it, but the first one here, we identified last time, we originally thought we'd need about $500,000 for the Civic Center, I'm sorry, the City Hall interim use plan, taking this down and demoing it, but we decided, let's leave the building up, let's do minimal to it. So we think we'll only need about $100,000 to do maybe the Phase One assessment, the asbestos and lead reviews, the closing down of facilities, putting up necessary gates, barriers, removing staircases and things to secure it in place. Yet, again, leaving the landscaping intact, the parking intact, and I believe council also wanted to leave the, this council chamber is available for meetings.
Wasn't there some thought that we were going to be taking some of the plants with us?
Some of it is going over, yes.
Okay. So that's still in the works?
And there's also another bunch of plants here we've identified that are very nice we'd like to take to other facilities. From what I understand, it takes about $50,000 to transplant those out, but we will, that's what they tell me. We'll be looking for opportunities, maybe Marina Park or others, when we're building something, to take a significant plant out of here and move it there. So hopefully, you'll slowly see this place turn into lawn and wood chips, so.
Don Webb asked for those two ficus trees in the front lawn.
Yeah.
If you can work that out.
Can you help me on a weekend? We'll deliver those, and I think he's got one across the street. The next one here is, we talked, and Nancy brought up briefly, this is the lifeguard headquarters. In order to save some money, and we have some more life in that facility, what we thought we'd do, and on your council item today for award, is the design contract for this, and just design it this year, and then postpone the actual construction, the rehabilitation of the inside for another year. It's in pretty good shape, we just put a new roof on the building, we think we can make that last another year. Unfortunately, the lifeguards are living in kind of cramped quarters, but that's $1.4 million we can put off for probably years, we go through the design, the approval process, which reduces that $3.6 down. There's a, I'm going to go real quick, the next four items, I have slides on, so I'll just go through those and explain the projects to you. Item three on there is a streetlight replacement plot, excuse me, replacement project. This is about $150,000, and this has to do with the streetlights around Newport Harbor High, Irvine Avenue, and San Diego, up in that area. There's a circuit up there, it's about 40 years old, our maintenance folks are having trouble getting parts to it, some of the fuses and things aren't even available anymore, and what we're doing is, we take some of our old circuits on, and we've been rehabilitating them, we're taking those parts and stockpiling them for this circuit. So we're going to rebuild that, there's about 28 lights, it'll be changed out to LED streetlights. The other significance of this, this is also includes the lights on Irvine Avenue where we had the young lady hit in the crosswalk, and we thought it'd be better visible light patterns up there to replace the old lights and put in the new LEDs up there. Item four is an opportunity project. This is to purchase more Rule 28 credits. Last year, you recall, we brought you a project, it cost us about 50 cents on the dollar, about half that amount, we bought $188,000 of surplus credits from another city. This year, we've actually been approached by a couple other cities that said, hey, are you interested in buying credits? And we're getting a pretty good deal, and I'll share that it's about 45 cents on the dollar, is what we're negotiating now. So with that, we thought we could buy additional credits if we can find them, they're a little tricky, and if you'd like, then we could advance some of the projects, for instance, Baboa Boulevard is one of the projects, the West Newport Citizens Advisory Committee wanted to see done, and it's also on our undergrounding master plan. Council could select a project if you choose to buy additional credits. This $974,000 would equate to about $2.1 million in credits we'd buy.
So if we buy the credits, and for some reason, we don't have any need for them right away, do we still get to keep them? I mean, is that something, like, there's a timeline on them, or how do they work?
They go into our bank with SCE, and right now, we're mortgaged out several years, you can mortgage five years, so it'd go, pay down our mortgage, and then we'd have a surplus in there. If I recall, looking at it real quickly, we'd end up with, I think we'd have about $3 million roughly in credits and mortgage ability to go forward, so we could probably do a project, Newport Boulevard, my staff tells me, is about $2.5 million in that range. You might be able to do that one, or either Superior, some of the other ones you've identified, and you could start that, once you buy the credits, we could start working with Edison right away to develop the project.
Dave, I've asked you this before, but I figured I'd ask it in public, is there any risk that those credits are all of a sudden valued differently when they're purchased like we're doing, or, you know, we're not buying a pig and a poke, for instance, then, by this?
I don't see that as a risk. When I talk to Southern California Edison, this has been a longstanding program with them, it's actually funded out of the PUC, they're mandated to put so much money into undergrounding. Undergrounding, just for instance, is based, you get credits based on two things, you get credits on population in the service area, and you get the other, that's 50% of the credit, and the other 50% is generated by how many overhead meters you have. So obviously, ours is going down as we keep undergrounding and keep doing it, our percentage of the 50% overhead meters is going down, that's why you're seeing every year our annual credit to us is going down. Other cities, some of the bigger cities have a lot of overheads, and there's a lot of credits that we can purchase out there.
How are you going to address the inevitable equity concerns that people are going to raise? You know, for example, a friend that is in Fern Leaf, they really want to be undergrounded there, and they've been told by the city, you've got to do an assessment, you have to, everybody has to pay, and yet, in another area of the city, the city is purchasing credits. How is that, I mean, there's going to, people are going to ask that question, what's your response to it?
Well, I guess the credits come to the city by way of the PUC, and they can only be used for certain things. Rule 28 is only allowed to be used on arterial highways or scenic and other constraints, you can't use them in neighborhoods. So right away, it takes the Fern Leafs and some of the neighborhoods out of it. The ones who are undergrounding now along the peninsula wouldn't be able to use those credits, they do a Rule 20B, and they have to do it on their own. But Baboa Boulevard is surely an arterial, and it's very visible, and would apply, or Superior, some of the other streets like that. I don't believe they also do over 66 KV's about as high as they go, it gets really expensive to do, you see those really high wires up to the 400 KV's are very expensive, and I don't even think they underground those.
Okay, thank you.
Next item, item five is completion of our local coastal plan implementation. As you recall, we've gone through the process, and we've basically got a certified land use plan, but we've never finished the process of the implementation plan. use plan, but we've never finished the process of the implementation plan. We do approximately 70 approvals a year through our community development department, and those approvals all end up having to go to the Coast Commission for their sake, because we don't have our local coastal plan approved. So this would actually be a customer benefit, obviously, to the city and the people working in the city when they come in through permits. The other note, I know up there that on the public work side, we do a lot of projects, as you know, that go through and have to go through Coast Commission that is not included in that 70. Having our community development department have a certified local coastal plan, then we could just take those projects through and hopefully speed up the time we actually address those. Coast Commission always has the right to pull it up, but most of them would probably just go through and not have any issues with the Coast Commission.
Is this the total cost of doing the local coastal plan?
I will probably have to ask that. This is a number, I believe, Kim, your shop generated?
We believe that cost will help us with the environmental studies that we will need to be as a companion document to the regulatory document that we will be preparing in-house. So we'll only be using consulting help for some of the more technical studies. But we hope to provide or do most of the work with our in-house staff.
And again, you think that this price will, combined with our in-house staff work, will allow us to complete the submission and get it approved?
I think so. At least, you know, at least get it ready to submit to the Coastal Commission. I think once we get to that point, we may have to look for some additional funding to get it through the Coastal Commission process. But certainly, it's adequate to prepare the document.
Well, I guess my question is more to the, is this the total cost of the program? And if it is the total cost of the program, do you expect to have it approved in a year? Or should we be looking at, say, if it's, we're only gonna spend two-thirds of it in the fiscal year, and the other third in the next fiscal year, budget the remaining third later? I mean, are you really gonna use it?
We could do that. We could put it, I would suggest, in two phases. We anticipate that the preparation for the document to submit to Coastal Commission will be about an 18-month process. We do want to complete the process in Newport Banning Ranch before we start this process. So hopefully, not too far into the new fiscal year. But I do not have any concerns if we wanted to budget half of the amount for this coming fiscal year, and then we can finish it in the following.
Okay. Thanks.
Also, this is not a matter simply of spending money, is it? I mean, don't we still have some areas of disagreement on our implementation?
Dave's gonna solve all that.
Oh, okay. Good. Isn't that the case?
Yeah, there is, there are at least three areas that are of primary concern that need to be addressed through the process. And a component of this program will include a community outreach, so that we can try to, so we can resolve these within the community, but in order so that council has a plan to adopt prior to going.
Okay. But I wasn't thinking so much of a conflict within the community. I was just thinking, we have a conflict with Coastal Commission staff on a couple of areas, don't we?
We do, yeah.
Okay.
As Councilor Solis is noting, yeah.
Okay.
I guess the dumb question is, have we decided we want to finish the program?
No, and that's why we're asking for some guidance today and tonight. And Dave has one more thing on the list, and we'll keep rolling on things we'd like guidance from you. This is just, this is staff's recommendation, which hopefully you'll, you know, consider as you decide what to do.
Item six on our list is completing the monument signs around town. This is Newport Coast Drive. We're missing two monument signs out there. The two we're proposing are on Newport Coast Drive, south of 73 Freeway, and also on Coast Highway as you're coming eastbound at Reef Point as you come into Newport Coast. I have two pictures up here because, a little explanation, the Newport Coast folks have raised the thought of maybe having a different monument sign, which you see there on the left. And I just put the other one up to show you what the current signs look like. And we have two monument types in the city. We have this one, for instance, Coron del Mar is a specific village as you come through. And then we have the others that are just generic, that don't have a certain place. They just say, welcome to Newport Beach. So this is a request. It's about $50,000. Typically, it's a little bit more. We have to do a little more design work to start this, but it's significantly less than I think the other proposals were.
Well, Mayor Protem Curry and I disagree on this. I feel that we should have one sign. And so before we go any further, I guess I'd like the sense of the council. If there's anybody else that feels this way, then I think we have a lot of discussion ahead of us. If nobody else feels this way, then we can go ahead and just talk about money.
Yeah. Well, I agree with you. You know, we spent a lot of money designing and a lot of time designing these signs for the city. And I know that the folks in Coron del Mar originally wanted to have a different sign, and we ended up going with the citywide standard, and that's what we've been doing. So I don't see any reason to make an exception up here. It doesn't make any sense to me. I think we need to stick with the program we have.
I guess I'm curious why the residents of Newport, I think it's driven by the residents, why are the residents so stuck on the idea of having a different sign?
Well, can I?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
First of all, let us discuss the issue of whether we have a citywide standard or not. Because if you look out here at Lido Island, the sign that goes to Lido, or if you look out to the sign that leads to the Balboa Peninsula, or if you look at the sign at Mason Birch Park, that I think used to say Santa Ana Heights, but now says Mason Birch Park, an equestrian community, or if you look at the sign that I think the homeowners did, that's on the edge of Irvine Terrace at Jamboree and Bayside, none of them involve the sailboat symbol. All of them are different. The sign that the neighborhood has designed is based off the sign that we put on the Newport Coast Community Center. That is a consistent graphic representation to what is already in the Newport Coast at the community center. And as you can see, the sailboats prominently feature on the city seal. So when a neighborhood comes to us and says, this is how we would like to do it, and we decide, well, we're not gonna do it because we want to be arbitrary about it, and if you don't have a sailboat, you can't possibly be part of Newport Beach, A, that's not consistently applied around the city, and B, we're picking fights with neighbors who want to do things a particular way that I think is fully consistent with the goal of what we're doing here, that adequately represents the neighborhood and the city. Sailboats are prominently displayed on the city seal, just as they are on the seal that's on the Newport Coast Community Center, that's for which this design is based. And then we say, I suppose we'll say, it's gotta be white and blue. It can't be beige and brown, even though that's what fits in the neighborhood up there. We do these arbitrary decisions, and we simply upset people and piss off our neighbors for reasons simply, I suppose, because we can do it. And I just think that's wrong. So I think we want to listen to the community. I think there's some value in that, as opposed to simply being arbitrary about it. But Mr. Wampole from the community is here, and maybe he can speak to it.
Well, you're missing a key fact there, though, Councilman Curry, and that is that as far as I know, all the signs that you mentioned were signs that were done before we adopted this standard, and we haven't elected to go out and change those. But everything that we've done since we've adopted the standard has fallen this design.
Anyone else on council want to discuss it? Does anybody, I'd like a straw vote, just a sense of the council. Do you want to go with the different design, or is there value in staying with what we have approved a few years ago? Anybody? You're all embarrassed to even have an opinion?
I'll vote, I should be, some of them should be. But I'll vote for the, for the new sign.
And I'll vote for the old sign.
Okay. So one to one. Let's get some tiebreakers up here.
No other sense?
Are we approving this project now?
No.
Well, you're giving us tentative guidance to present it for the, in the budget adoption. But I did, I don't know that there's a better opportunity unless the city attorney really kicks me hard.
I think this is a Brown Act violation. I don't think this is a Gendiz.
I think we can have straw votes, can't we? To get a sense, give staff a sense of the direction?
I think it's generally covered under this item, that you can have a discussion about and do a straw vote.
So, well, so far, it's one to two, so I win.
Madam Mayor, can I say votes?
No, this design was in, I know that it's some advisory board up there, who actually came up with that design?
I think this was submitted by Jerry Ross and by Jim McGee, and I think Dan Wampole is in concurrence with it. So I think it represents a consensus proposal put forth by the advisory committee members.
Which hasn't met in two years.
All right, I'm gonna weigh in on this. For the city sign, I guess. I mean, I understand what you're saying, Keith, and I agree. Why piss off the neighbors? But we're talking, no, no, we're talking about three neighbors. I haven't heard a public outcry. Maybe that'll change. Mr. Wampole is sitting out there smiling. When we do actually consider the appropriation for this sign. But I agree with Ed and Nancy, we do have a sign for the city. It does create a unifying presence for our city, which unfortunately, there are people that think Coron del Mar is still not part of Newport Beach, who live in Coron del Mar. So this, and I'm sure there's people in Newport Coast that think they're still part of the county. But, so for that reason, I don't think it's because we can. I think it's just a long-term goal to unify the city as Newport Beach, not as a bunch of little villages.
Have we used the new standard sign at any place that is not the entrance to a village?
City Hall, in front of it.
There are a couple of signs, again, they're generic, but when you get on Bonita Canyon and some of the entry roads, you have a sign that won't say Coron del Mar or Mariner's Point, but it'll say, welcome to Newport Beach, which has the sails and the seal in it.
I think the new sign we just put in at Balboa Village, I believe, is the standard.
I believe it's that. I think the sails went on it, yeah. But it's a curb. That was the only change in it, because it had a corner.
Maybe as a consolation prize here, Keith, we did, I believe, and against my vote, we removed, because I didn't vote for them, we removed the wayfinding signs, I believe, from Newport Coast, because the residents didn't like them.
We did.
Yes, we did. So you got half a pie. How about that?
Well, I guess, I guess, you know, I'll just add this. First off, this isn't even something I want to talk about from here, to be honest with you. But, you know, we are discussing in the Balboa Village Citizens Advisory Panel, you know, determining new identification for that area, because the moniker fun zone is such a well-understood descripting term for that area. And as a part of that, we have contemplated the idea of changing signage to help with the identification of it. There's a real reason for it in that situation. And so I'm a bit reluctant to, for that reason, knowing what's coming by way of a recommendation there for, you know, to establish a hard and fast rule on this.
If I could assist to, we're looking at your advice to program the funds tonight. So if you don't want to make a choice in the sign, we could put the money, and if you choose that we still need to do the signs out there, that's the big thing. Those are the two that are missing. What type you want, we could look at later if you like. It's, we really need to know where the budget is tonight.
Yeah. Why don't we just leave the money in the budget, and let's move on? We really don't need to be having this discussion tonight. We got, I'm sure, a big agenda, and, you know, clearly, there's some disagreement, and we'll have to have more conversation about it. But why don't we just put it in as a number, and we'll figure out what the sign's gonna look like later?
That's fine with me, unless, yeah.
I think we're, I don't know.
Clearly, we're not making a decision here. We're not voting on a sign, right?
No, you're generally giving us guidance.
Okay, so the guidance is, put it in the budget. Put it in the budget, and we'll bring it back to us, and we'll have a full, more robust discussion. And people from Newport Coast can come in and express their opinion about the sign. And people from Balboa Village can come down and say what they want for their sign. And let's move on with our budget discussion.
What's funny in the budget, we'll work it out later.
Okay. Is that acceptable? All right. Get rid of this as fast as possible? Yeah, okay.
Boy, there's some sausage there.
Okay. So there's a couple of other projects in here. There, actually, you'll notice, six to 11, there's a gap there. And projects seven through 10 are about the Citizens Advisory Panel revitalization. So at that point, I'm gonna have to have a couple of council members leave. But before we talk about that, I wanted to show you three other projects that we're looking at to include, if it is your desire. Item number 11 is the Balboa Cove walkway. This is $50,000, we're looking to program. Along in front of Balboa Coves is a, basically a walkway, water walkway, that runs along. And there's a little bit of a picture here. It starts at Balboa Bridge and goes down to Promontory Point, I believe. There's an element missing here, right at the bridge, where we have no pedestrian or public access. We have private access that goes through the yacht club here, but it's really encumbered and difficult. The missing link is basically making a connection to the bridge here, and we think we can do that pretty easily. We need to do some design in it. We need to do some permit ability, and then maybe construct it another year. So this puts the design and permit money in there to look at building this connection right here.
Okay. Wasn't that one of the items in the Title's Management Committee that was also on the list? And wasn't it ranked fairly far down the list? Am I thinking of a different walkway?
No, same way.
Yep. But it is in here. It's one of the items. It's a relatively, it gets the project started and...
Well, it looks like a significant difference in elevation. And you can meet all the handicap and put a ramp down?
Yeah, you're looking, I'm sorry, you're looking at low tide here. And there is a large gap here. And what we'd be doing is basically coming up here with an ADA ramp, probably similar to what you'd find on the Rhine Wharf that we put in. And then when you get in this landing here, we think we can make a stationary platform that goes over this bridge pier and comes back and joins right about here. And I think it can be done. We looked at it. It's just figuring out the pieces and the permits. We might be able to modify this. This dock is coming up for redo with the Irvine Company, and they talked about maybe putting an ADA walkway on their fours. So we're still kind of putting all the pieces together. This would get it started.
Yeah, this is a, a item that was a condition of approval of the projects along Bayside Drive when that public walkway was constructed back in the 70s. And for some reason, it was never built, and the projects were never required to fulfill the condition of approval. So it's kind of a missing link that's been there for a long time. And we originally thought it was going to be funded by the Marine Apartments when they were going to convert it to single-family homes. And that project's died now. So it's really an important link as far as the pedestrian walkway system around Bayside Drive and Balboa Island.
Where would it, where's the red accessing to? Is it?
Marine Avenue.
Yeah, this is Marine right here.
All right.
The yacht club's right here.
Yeah, I knew the bridge, but how it was coming, it was not clear.
I support something like that. I think the daily walk is a way of life in some parts of our community. So to the extent we can improve and enhance it for people, I support that.
And I think we probably want to look to the whole package when we get down to that, because this is item 11, and there's some more to talk about. So I'll go through those, and then we'll probably, I think we're gonna go into council's straw votes on projects.
This is just 50 grand to design and approve it, not to construct it?
Yeah, it'll probably be a little bit more to construct it. This might be a little high. I haven't figured all the pieces yet. I think we can get this in relatively easily. We met out there and looked at it. But we'll need a structural engineer to look at this bridge deck here where it joins for some reason. I'm sorry, my light went out.
Stay away from the sign.
Don't go there. This pier right here is what would be joining, basically. That's the bridge.
Oh, I see.
Which is right here, under there. We can actually go off the landing here, which is here, and go over to the bridge deck and back, and then cut through this wall and beyond the bridge from the walkway off the bridge.
Is this unique, that it's, that it's not a boardwalk? I mean, it's, you're going down to a pier without handrails or guardrails, and it's right, direct access to the boats that are there? Is that, is that unique? Do we have that anyplace else in the city? Without going through gates or anything?
I think it would be unique. You could help me on that. But it's the only floating walkway that I know we have in the city. But there are handrails, you can see right here.
The handrails are on the ramp.
Actually, anybody have a pointer?
There's no handrails.
This one right here follows this all the way down. It goes all the way down.
That's on the land. That's not on the...
This is on the actual floating dock. The land is up here. Here's the bulkhead, and this is the dock here with the boats on this side. And this rail continues right along here, all the way down to Promodory Point and up.
Well, I've walked on that dock a million times, and I don't remember that rail being there.
But I think Councilman Hill's point, though, is there's, is there direct access to the boats?
Yes.
There is direct access to the boats.
And we've already had so many problems with Marina, other Marina, where we were trying to get the public access, and people were coming in to a private Marina, and they were having issues.
But I think this is a public walkway.
Yeah, it already is a public walkway. People are walking on it now. The problem is, they have to walk, if you use it, you have to walk through the Newport Harbor Yacht Club parking lot, dogleg around and get on Marine Avenue. People are already walking on it.
Are they?
It's been a public walkway for 30 years.
It's a very quiet one.
There's actually quite a few people that walk on it.
Because I think that's another thing that I would like to see, if we do this, is at both ends. The other end, to me, is sort of a secret, unless you really know the area. People will not, would be hesitant to walk there. They would think it was private property. So to do something better signage, so people know that this is part of the walkway.
Our next project here has to do with the bikeway extension. This is on East Bluff, and this is East Bluff and Jamboree. And we'd be looking to put an on-street bike trail on East Bluff right here. When you, when you start at Mar Vista, basically, the bike trail ends, and there's no bike trail along this segment of East Bluff. We currently have an OCTA grant in for this project, which would do this work. And then as you cross over Jamboree and continue down forward, we have adequate right-of-way, we're gonna put stripe lanes on the street. But this particular joint between Jamboree and Mar Vista is too narrow right here to put an on-street trail in. So this would have to move this curb over, curb, sidewalk, the streetlights and everything, so we could get a five-foot on-street trail there. Again, we'd be looking for $35,000 here. The total construction cost is 271. This would be a recommendation only if we get the OCTA grant funds, which we do have an application in for. If we didn't get it, I, again, we'd want to have a council discussion whether you want to fund the whole cost of it or not.
What, speaking of revisiting projects that, you know, we thought there was gonna be maybe a different outcome, what exactly, is there an easement on the church property, or how was that ultimately handled?
I believe we got some dedication off the church property, staff told me recently. So where you see this sidewalk back here, it's a, it's a wide sidewalk now. There's a little bit of dedication we have back here. The problem is, you've got a large retaining wall in the corner here. You've got streetlights, street trees, and this is also a major pathway to the high school. So you, in order to do this, a bike trail through here, we're gonna have to move that curb and sidewalk over five feet to make it work. So it's so much, we don't have, we have the room, it's just the cost of doing it.
Well, it seems as if the underlying reason for the dedication was to somehow assist with bike trail. But if your concept of the bike trail is to remove those street cheese and make the side... sidewalk not as wide, then we no longer need the dedication. We'll get the bike trail, right? Is that kind of the plan?
I think our traffic folks have looked at this. If you want to do the bike lane through there, which people prefer to ride on the street, we need to make room for it. But it doesn't necessarily delete the need for a wider sidewalk in there, because we have so much pedestrian traffic. Otherwise, what you're doing is you're putting the bikes on the sidewalk. And my guess is the hardcore bicyclists do not want to ride on the sidewalk. They want to be in the street.
Well, the problem with spacing street trees every three feet is you lose the functional value of a sidewalk where you have those trees. I mean, people don't sort of zigzag in and out of that area and they certainly don't ride a bike. So are you, in order to make the trail, you're going to be, in order to put in the bike lane, you're going to take out some of the sidewalk, correct?
Correct. We're going to move the curb south five feet.
Right.
We'll have to move the streetlights. And I believe there's some street trees that either get removed or replanted back. And we'll probably have to widen the sidewalk then into that easement that we obtained.
Okay. I'm just wondering if we still need that dedication. And if we don't, then maybe we can have a discussion about the church, if they may be able to help in some way.
We can do that when we start putting it together.
Right, okay.
The last project on our list is Old Newport Boulevard. And there's a desire to add parking and landscaping in here. And kind of like we did with revitalization, to maybe develop a concept plan next year. This is looking both directions, just around Catalina there. And you can see a lot of overhead utilities. It basically was the old road before the current Newport Boulevard was built. It's a very wide street. It has businesses and things that are turning over right now in it. And there's a concept, I believe, we can either do center parallel parking or something that might be able to add parking and also do landscaping that would spiff up the street a little bit. So this money, $50,000, would start that and develop that concept.
We actually already have a concept for that area in the old specific area plan.
And I have not seen that. I was brought to my attention that there was a concept or something done years ago. So we'd want to pull that out and look at it.
Yeah, I think I've talked about this in the past. It's, you know, the whole street is changing. There's new buildings. There's two buildings under construction right now. There's at least probably a half a dozen buildings that have been built in the last five years on that street. There's another couple of properties up for sale. And I know there's at least one, if not two, projects that are permitted, but haven't started construction yet. And so, you know, we're going to be way behind the curve here if we don't start thinking about what we want that street to ultimately look like. In addition, we're granting parking waivers to buildings on that street for lot consolidation and pushing parking out onto the street. And if we don't create a situation where there is enough parking on the street, that we're going to have a problem there. So I suggest that we get out in front of it and at least move forward with the design work.
It's also an area where we have some of the most obnoxious telephone poles in town as well.
Would that be Rule 20A there? Is it arterial?
It's not an arterial now, but it could be. And we'd have to look at that. It's a scenic area. When you come down, that's the entry to Newport. And that's one area, you see it by Hospital Road. There's zip wires across. So I think some of it surely would apply. I don't know.
There you go.
So I think at this point, we wanted to get directions on items one through six.
Yeah, here's where we start to get into different types of voting. So Dave, as the next slide, we're seeking whether or not the items we have proposed for one to six are appropriate, because that does give you some of the savings that you can use for other funds.
Well, I have an idea here.
Okay.
There's no way we're going to need that $150,000 for the local coastal plan. So if we take that $150,000, cut it to $75,000, and then take items 11 and 12, reduce the Bayside walkway to $40,000, and take the $35,000 for the East Bluff bicycle lane and pull those up above the bottom line there. So that means 11 and 12 can move up above the line by reducing item number five.
Well, I have one thing that's not on there. And I'm, the Cron Del Mar entry improvement.
That's something we're going to talk about next.
Okay.
Because of their convoluted way we're doing this, yeah.
Well, I support Councilman Selig's proposal. Staff feel it's workable?
What, Dave, what about workload?
Well, once we have an idea of what you want to do, I'll start working on the workload. We have a lot of consultants on board now. We can, some of these we can do by consultants. But what we might have to do, when I look at it, is maybe, it'll take me a little longer to get to it. For instance, how quickly we get to, if you want to do a Bayside Drive Cove, we could start it, get a consultant on board. It's just juggling how much. The other big ones, the big real workloads in the cap projects, along with, we've got a pretty good hefty load now. The Civic Center project's going to be wrapping up here by maybe March. We'll be out of the thick of that. But we do have two big park projects that just may kick in. They've been out there for a while, so. But I'll have to give you more input on that when we get to it.
I guess I had a thought as well, that with regard to the Old Newport Boulevard, if it turns out that that bicycle lane, that there's the OCCA, OCTA grant doesn't come through, that would free up the $35,000. When are we going to find out about the OCTA grant?
We just put the applications in in April. I guess, as you won't know, till midsummer, maybe July, and they'll try to program the money in fall.
So if that falls out, I'd certainly want to move number 13 up, you know, with that availability, at least from a funding perspective.
I would support moving number 13 up as well. I would also support making the savings that Councilman Selig's talked about that are currently above the line. And I would reserve that money for other projects, which I'm not allowed to talk about.
So let me make sure I'm clear. When you're talking about the coastal plan, so far, it sounds like I'm hearing at least four people agreeable to $75,000 at least for that and the CIP for this period until we'll at least get that rolling.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, as Mr. Selig pointed out, Bayside Cove, public walkway, 40, East Bluff Bike Lane, 35.5. But pending an OCTA grant. If the OCTA grant doesn't come in, then that money would be reprogrammed to the streetscape at Old Newport Boulevard. And so I've got so far.
And I would move the number 13 above the line.
Yeah.
So you're going to dig into, well...
Well, I would, yeah. Well, let me, I didn't really say my part here. I would all, I agree with Ed, you know, to the extent that we don't need the money there in the coastal plan. Let's move some of these other things up. I do, I think that the Old Newport Boulevard streetscape, to get the project, you know, planned at least, I mean, we're not talking about building the thing, we're just talking about planning for it, is important to get it going. And, you know, I realize that there's money in seven to 10 that I'm not going to be able to discuss, but, you know, I think it's as important as any of the, probably the cap projects that are going to come up. So I would hope that somewhere along the line, we can find the $50,000 to do that.
I would, I would think your argument that with so many things, several big things going on in that, to get ahead of it and not to be trying to design later, thinking, oh, well, if only we had. So that probably is a good reason, at least, to get some design work going there, too. I would support that.
As would I. That's a good one. Okay. I think we have enough direction then to move to the next segment, which would mean...
Just, go ahead, Mr. Harp.
Before you go, you just need to state your financial interest, unless you're recusing yourself.
I have to go to the bathroom. I mean, I live in West Newport, within 500 feet of the West Newport Cap, so I will be accusing myself.
And I'm accusing myself because I own an office building within 500 feet of the very end of the West Newport Beach Cap.
I'll recuse myself only with respect to discussion. I'm going to make a comment here. My potential conflict has to do with a consulting relationship that I have with the ownership of a business in Vialito Plaza. I guess I, what I'd like to have is more discussion before the next, you know, capital appropriations presentation here, about the exact nature of these conflicts and how it relates to this discussion. Because, for example, the West Newport landscaping, I have no conflict whatsoever about. But I'm going to leave the room, because we've bundled it with some other things, one of which I do. And I do understand that there is a potential issue regarding prioritization of projects. But I guess I don't see that in any different light particularly than the $51 million of things that we are prioritizing in total here. So I'm going to leave, but I do want to have a better discussion about how this gets sorted out. Thanks.
All right, let me be excused. So moving into this part, this is our neighborhood revitalization. And here's the full list here. And you just told us you'd like to do one through six, 11, 12 if it works, and 13, move it above the line. So the next topic is basically discussions of items seven, eight, nine, 10. These are all neighborhood revitalization projects. And I'll go through these real quick and give you some background, and then you can give us some direction on that, too. First item seven is the Bristol Street South Median Landscape Project. We're looking to do $125,000 request here. Now, this wasn't the top priority project of the cap. You remember, that was Balboa Boulevard. However, these plans have been designed and done. As part of when we did the conceptual plans, we had the money. And council approved, just doing the designs, it was such a minor amount. So the plans are project-ready. We are thinking on applying for T-money that's supposed to come out here in, I'm sorry, September. So what we're looking to do is a $500,000 project. Apply for a 75-25 match, which is 125. And if we get the money, then you'll be able to roll on this project. As a reminder, the project across the freeway, the north side, we did apply and were successful for T-money, and that's in our construction right now. It rated really well, because it's high visible, it's high traffic, and we think this one would be a winner, too. That's why we moved this one up where it's at. Item eight, then, would be Balboa Boulevard landscaping, which was the priority of the cap. And the council put this as their number one. This is to basically do the landscaping from West Coast Highway all the way down to 22nd Street on Balboa Boulevard. The project total cost is 1.75 million. The 265 takes it from the design, I'm sorry, the conceptual phase through to the design phase to construction documents. And then you would have some options depending. This would probably be applicable to IST grant money if we could have future calls. And one of the things we could do, if we're still short on funds, is break it up into two projects or something like that, once we have the design done. But we would think we should get this design and get it on the shelf and ready to go. Project number nine here, West Coast Highway. This is a much larger project. As you recall, this is 4.1 million total, and this has to do with West Coast Highway and Superior. It has some entry elements to it. We're not looking to start the whole thing in this project. We're still working with Caltrans, which, by the way, the conversation's going well with them on the ability to do enhanced landscaping. But we thought we'd start putting some money into doing some partial design, start working on some improvements through the state. This is just maybe the two points we'd probably start working on, is the entry point coming in from the west over the San Ana River, which is featured there. And also the intersection probably of West Coast Highway and Balboa, were two of the strong elements. So this would get us started, if you wanted to keep this project rolling and keep working with Caltrans. But you do have a $4.1 million cost down the road in that. Number 10 here is the Cron Del Mar entry element. This is the $100,000 to complete the design. And I'll note in this, we, the bid is a part of the funders of the design effort on it. They committed to $76,000, if I recall, of which they funded the first portion of this. They've spent about $44,000 to date, if I have my numbers right. So there's another $32,000 available. And we can confirm this with the bid folks, to start advancing it. That might cover, if we want to do the channelization studies, some of the parking studies, the SEQA. But we're looking for about 120 total, so that's where the 100,000 comes from. The 100,000 will be general fund. And then also at the bottom, you'll notice the construction cost of this is 1.2 million. So to start the design, you're looking at putting that much forward. And then eventually, you'd spend the 1.2 on the construction. And at this point, with the caps, we'd like some council direction on how you want to proceed with those projects.
For the Cron Del Mar one, I, the one thing I would like to see, I'm hoping we could find some funds, is to do the striping, the test for the traffic. Because to me, that's the sort of make or break aspect of it. And if we find that our initial thoughts about it are not working, that they're really, some of the neighbors' fears have come to pass, then we're going to have to stop, sit down and think about the whole thing all over again, I think. So I, that to me is, whether we go into a full design or not, I think that is something, if we could possibly do it sooner rather than later, could either open the door for us or say, hey, there's a lot of money available. It's not going to be spent on that particular area.
From attending all the cap meetings and participating in these projects, it's quite clear that the Balboa Boulevard landscaping project was a top priority of the groups. But I guess what's, what I'm missing is, and this is, you know, how are we going to get this all done? If we start doing designs on two or three projects, but, you know, how do you see them being built? I mean, how, are we looking at five years? And, you know, I guess I was looking for, on these projects, that we would come up with some kind of a CIP plan for these projects that would go out through construction, so we could see how they all, how they all fit together and, you know, how we're actually going to afford them, because they're very expensive projects to do. So to go off and start doing design work for something that we may not be able to build, or it may be sometime in the future. For example, does it make sense to start doing the West Coast Highway project? It's extremely expensive if we're going to be spending three years trying to get Balboa Boulevard done. So, I mean, is there any sense of what we're looking at in terms of actually getting these constructed and how many years and where phases and how we're going to bring it about?
There's some sense we've looked at it. And part of it's, I hate to say Ouija, because I don't know what the future holds for general fund allotment and how much council wants to put towards this program. You've got a lot of money in your facility management plan. You've got lots of big parks and things coming on. And our thought was, when we looked at these, is look for grant opportunities first, and that's why Bristol's up there, because I think that can add some to the pot. So we invest in that project and we get that grant funded and out. Balboa being such a high priority, I thought it was important, due to the design, to look for future grant projects. Or if we get a design in its, I believe it was 1.7, you could do it in two phases, probably over two years. It looks like a certain amount of general fund we could dedicate to that project and get that room rolling. And in two years, you should have that built. There are some decisions in there we want to talk about. For instance, if you decided to underground the utilities there, Edison tells us as soon as they could do a Rule 20 project is 2016. So do we do that hand in hand? Or do we do the landscaping first, knowing we're going to grow up into the future poles? I think those two are manageable. When you get past that, Coast Highway's idea was, we know we have a struggle with Caltrans, although, like I said, we've met with the director. We're having some positive feedback with our attorney's office, talking to their attorney's with our attorney's office, talking to their attorney's office about coming up with an agreement that'll allow us to do enhanced landscaping while they still own the facilities. And basically, is what we've agreed, is we'd take all the tort liability, which we have on all the other streets, anyway, and they just keep the street. And they're open to that concept now. But it might take us a year or two to get that done, and in the meantime, we can develop some, maybe further concept plans, or maybe just the entry plan coming over the San Ana River, something to feed to them and get maybe a permit started. But that's a couple of years out, I think. This is just kind of seed money. So, you get Balboa done, and you wouldn't really be tackling West Coast Highway, in my eyes, for at least two or three years, which is a big nut to crack. It's 4-point-something million.
You're talking about spending $300,000 here. On one hand, it sounds like you're talking about maybe not doing much to get it going. On the other hand, there's $300,000 in the budget for the next 12 months.
Actually, Councilmember Solich, that's where we draw, you're talking about the West Coast Highway one?
Yeah.
That's where we drew the line above it, meaning that we're not proposing that those things be funded. Apologize if that's not really clear. You can see in the cumulative total over on the side, we go from 3.5 to 3.8. So, we drew the line above that, and I think, in a way, we are foreshadowing what staff's recommended projects are. It really does involve Balboa Boulevard. We potentially would use the undergrounding funds to get the utilities undergrounded there, at the same time, do the design, and again, as Dave noted, move Bristol Street up, because there's such a good matching opportunity. But we're, that's why we're asking for your guidance, if we've drawn the line at the right spot. Also, in terms of workload, we don't know that we would have the workload to do little bits of all four of these things, but we think we could do well two of them.
I apologize, Councilmember Solich. On this slide, the blue line represents, you just asked us to do projects one through six. That gives us a funding level, and then we were proposing to do seven and eight, and you cut that off, and that brings us back to 3.6. So, we weren't proposing, at this point, to take on West Coast Highway or Corona Del Mar, unless you feel a strong need for that. In addition to this, I heard the council would like to add 11, 12, and 13 above that red line, so.
Well, no, I don't disagree with where you've drawn the line. It's just as looking at the big picture. I mean, you know, when we bid these projects off, we knew they were gonna be very expensive, and, you know, how are we going to, you know, actually bring them about over a reasonable period of time?
We could probably, that's a good point. We're painting part of the picture with this, but not all of it. We could bring back a discussion, that's a longer look at that. But it is gonna help us, if you start picking what you think should go first, and indeed, the Neighborhood Revitalization Committee has looked at some of that, but.
You might want to incorporate this with your facility finance plan, because it's a lot of outlay, and it's, you really kind of need to see how much money might be available and how you want to spend it. So, we haven't thought that far out in nine and 10. They are big dollar animals, so.
Well, but we have let the bid pay for some stuff. Is that correct?
Yes. As we started the CAP projects this year, I recall, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, we were looking at doing two, and then we increased that, and one of the thoughts was the bid stepped forward and said they would fund the design of it, up to $76,000. So, they were included in it, which has led where we are today. But we never really had any indication of how we're gonna fund the construction.
Yeah, I'm not talking about the construction. I, that's, I'm fine waiting for that. I just, as I say, how much do you think it would cost to do the test striping, so we could get a sense of the traffic impact?
About 20 to 25,000 to put it in place and then remove it. That would be including deleting the parking in front of the restaurants.
How long would you leave it in place if we were testing it?
Our busiest months on that highway are June and July. We'd like to get it in by July, and if you're gonna pay for it and you have the time, if you don't want to start the construction, I'd leave it in for three, six months. Let's see what it really does, because there's an adaptation phase where people are gonna get used to it, and once they start riding in it, okay, I get how this works. So, maybe catch the summer months into late fall. I don't think, well, you can leave it through Christmas, it really depends. You should get a good feeling, within a few months, whether it's working or not, and if the residents are gonna accept it or not.
I would really, as I say, like to recommend that, not to go any farther than that, but just to get that, since it's not a big dollar item, and it could answer a lot of questions. I think it's worthwhile to consider.
And what you might want to do on that, Mayor, is that there is some, we would have to check with the bid, but we did not spend all their commitment. We only spent 44,000. I think there's 33,000 left, and if they're willing to fund that, you could do, and not hit your general fund, so you could keep moving that project forward, but not have a general fund.
But didn't we kind of, when we accepted their contribution, indicate that we would at least get going on the plans? I mean, I think you have to do the test first, presumably.
But, I mean, if, it seems to me that it's a wise way of doing it, because if the test just blows up in our face, the whole concept really has to, we have to start over.
No, no, I understand that, but let's say that the test is over in August or September, then are they gonna have to wait another eight or nine months till the next budget cycle before we get going on plans?
No, conceivably, you could always direct us to bring something back, and, or in mid-year, sorry, even before mid-year, say after the first quarter. I think for us, what, things do drop out of the CIP as things go along. We like to have it adopted and finalized at this point, but we do have windows where we could replace something, and if that's the approach you wanted to take with that, that might work for us. I can't guarantee something would be replaced, but it's a possibility.
The other option on that, too, is not doing it this summer. Put it off and start the test, say, next March, so it goes into next June, July. I mean, it's delaying a little further out, if you're not gonna start the construction, but there is a significant amount of work that'll go into that test. I'm just concerned with the PR element, and the reaction staff will get a lot of calls about angry residents and things, and.
Yeah, well, I, there may be something to that. If you're trying to get it in for July, there isn't a lot of time to do much of an information project, so that's something to consider. Mayor Potem Curry, you have some questions.
Well, I would be inclined to support the mayor on this. I think it's important that we get the test done, and I think that's gonna dictate how much we're able to move forward, and whether we're gonna move forward. I'd like to see these projects frankly compressed more than I would see how they're being expanded. I think we can, you know, leave the West Coast Highway project off for now, but if we identify funds and if we resolve the Caltrans issues, that can move at a more accelerated rate in the future. So, I think the list that you have here with some money put in for Corona Del Mar entry, perhaps not this full $100,000, would be appropriate.
So, what would the number be, again, Corona Del Mar?
I believe it's gonna be 20 to 25,000 to set it up and take it down. We'd have to do real permanent striping, probably lots of dots and something, more than just cones.
Six months of cones?
Yeah, that would be, we want to make it look like a real thing. We're not gonna put arrow boards and stuff, so people actually use it.
Okay.
And again, my recommendation might be, it's pretty quick to get it in July. It's a big staff load, if you don't mind. It could be done coming out of, I don't know, February, March next year.
But what about August?
We could do it for August. I could get it going for it. I talked to staff, we could get our consultants, we have on-call.
Well, if you could get a sense of it, I mean, obviously, the danger here is that we are, once again, drowning staff in projects, and we don't want to do that, but you have said that we have consultants that we are utilizing more and everything. So, if you could give us a sense, before we finish, I don't mean today, but finish our complete discussions, as to if it's plausible to do it this time around, instead of waiting a year. I think that would, I know the bid would be unhappy waiting that long.
And one last question for council, then, on that. Would you want to fund that, or are you looking to continue to ask the bid to fund that?
I have no trouble asking the bid if they'd like to do that. Any other comments from council on this? Okay, does that, again, give you some?
Let me try to summarize what I've heard now. So, and I certainly know you'd like some public comment on this. If the CDM one is moved up, it'd be moved up at $25,000 with the expectation that the bid would fund it. So, right now, that leaves us, we're, given what the seven of you said, and now what the four of you said, we're about at 35.64, 3.564, which is okay. We brought 50 up. We changed some numbers in LCP. So, I'm certainly comfortable with that, I think. And let anybody from staff have any comments or concerns in light of what we've heard so far. Dave, or Tracy, or?
So, is the West Coast Highway not?
Correct. That's down, that stays down. CDM would move up to 25, potentially bid-funded. So, my math shows 3.564. Agreed? Okay.
All right.
If you're comfortable with that, the four of you, Aaron, you wanna jump in?
Yeah, that's fine. We do have some folks nearly jumping out of their chairs for a public comment.
Before we have public comment, I would like the rest of the council to return.
Well, it probably makes sense to have comments, maybe just on those, I know it's kind of convoluted, but maybe just on items, you know, seven through 10 of the neighborhood revitalization projects, and then have general comments on the overall program.
All right, so, public comment on items seven through 10 only, at this point.
Sure, Mayor, that's Bristol Street, Balboa Boulevard, West Coast Highway, and CDM.
Bernie Swalstad, chairman of Corona Del Mar bid, Madam Mayor and council. Our main advocate isn't here because his attorneys left him out, and I'm disappointed, because I can't see the conflict with Rush Hill and in our area. But anyway, that would be advantage for us. I agree with Nancy to a partial degree. Number one, as the bid said all along, that we'd pay for this $20,000 or so for the striping of that. But what's happening, if you don't bring that above the line and don't have the staff involved, we really need to proceed with the parking area consultation in that area, what can happen, whether we have to go to coastal committee, we have to do a few things. If we can't get the staff involved in more than a minor way on this project, this project's dead till next year, which the bid would be completely disappointed in. So, I'd request that you at least put in 25,000 in addition to what the bid's gonna put in. If the bid's willing to do the 20,000 on the study, I don't think you should wait till August on it. I don't think it can be that difficult to have somebody set that up before that. I think it'd be advantageous. I don't think it should be for any four or five months. I think we have to talk to some people in the community and businesses about that, because there has to be some replacement of parking, and that's why we need the city staff and a little more involvement in the staff in regard to this project. So, I'd request that you bring it above the line, and if you don't have the staff more involved in just doing that, putting some cones out there, we're dead till next year.
We're not doing cones, it's already been established.
Well, cones and the striping, so that's what you are doing, I think.
No, we're not doing cones, though. It will be a permanent type.
Well, whatever it is, I mean, whatever you want to call it, so, it's gotta be something that's permanent, it's like cones, like you put on the freeway or something, I guess, right?
It would actually be striping, permanent striping, along with delineators taking them apart.
Delineators, then, okay.
Wouldn't be cones.
Delineators and striping, then, put it that way. So, anyway, I'd suggest that it not be for four to six months, until we have a discussion with the businesses. But that's why we need the staff more involved for the first, you know, few months while it's going on, to figure out what we can do with parking, and what if we have a coastal commission issue and things like that, and not just put out some delineators, so.
But that is one of our discussions, is we, how thinly we can stretch staff. You understand that?
Well, this is one of the top priorities of the projects for the revitalization, if I recall, and the staff and the council pretty much agreed that that was one of their priorities to start with, at least to find out if we can do the parking, and not just the delineators and the traffic issue, but we need to figure out the parking, whether we have to go to coastal, et cetera, et cetera. And if we can't do that, then we're just, I don't know, we're wasting a lot of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Seven, eight, nine, or 10. If it's not on one of those issues, we're gonna hold off.
Hi, I'm a resident of Corona Del Mar, and I just thought this was a.
I'm a little closer to the light.
And can we have your name?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Sherry Pollak. I live on Dahlia. I've lived there for about 10 years, and I have seen the neighborhood change quite a bit in traffic, so when I noticed that this was being spoken today, I thought it was important enough. My understanding is that the whole desire to have the street widened was so the restaurants could have outdoor seating. Am I correct?
No, that is not part of the concept. It could be at some point.
Oh, okay.
The concept was to have room for improvement, the center median, like we've done through the rest of Coast, on Coast Highway through Corona Del Mar, and then landscaping, as you come in on MacArthur, to create a nice entryway, landscaping and an entry sign of some design.
Okay. Well, my first reaction is, right now, you have this enormous city center being built there. The traffic is going to double, triple. You probably have the statistics. So, to narrow a highway when there's going to be so much more traffic, because right now, as a resident, it's difficult to get in there. It's difficult to get through PCH and MacArthur, so that this is narrowing it to make it prettier, nicer. It just seems like it's why wouldn't you wait till the city center is finished, and then take an idea of when the traffic is going, what it's going to be like?
All right, thank you. Any other comments on seven, eight, nine, or 10?
Mayor Gardner and members of the council, I would just like to raise the question with regard to the Corona Del Mar striping. If staff, talking about doing it just a month from now in July, has adequately considered whether taking away the lane, even with temporary striping for several months, might itself need some kind of approval from Orange County Transportation Authority, or maybe even the Coastal Commission, and somebody in the middle of the test would come, hey, you don't have the proper permits for doing this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Patricia Ricks, and I live on Begonia, and it's about the Corona Del Mar entry improvements. I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Gardner, for pressing for this test, because I think, at least all my neighbors, their concern is the traffic and losing that lane, and that's what we need to know. We're not against beautifying the entrance to Corona Del Mar, that's not the issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on these particular items?
Good afternoon, my name's Laura Curran. I live on Dahlia. One comment, I'm interested in this traffic study as well, because it's not just about smoothing the flow of traffic or slowing the flow of traffic to reduce, you know, speeds as people are trying to figure out a fast way on PCH. It's also about making the turn onto Dahlia safer, because as you have the three lanes collapsing into two, and I just experienced this on Saturday, people are trying to figure out how to zig and zag, so they can get their better spot, and if you're trying to turn right, it's easy to potentially get hit, as you're trying to look at all the sightlines. So, that's something, one thing. And then, another thing, thought I've been mulling over, is we look at reducing the lanes and making it easier in part to have people cross the street, you know? And I go to Pete's all the time, I see other people do this all the time, and I've been looking at the free right turn, where we've improved the cycling lane. And it's improved, but that free right turn and MacArthur crossing is still very dangerous. And I've been thinking about, would it make sense to look at having a pedestrian bridge, similar to the one up at City Hall, at that MacArthur crossing, which would then kind of help deliver pedestrians to that seating area and that restaurant area? Because there could be several of the benefits that we're looking for, for the City Hall Bridge, and it could be a way to also reduce the number of times a pedestrian presses the button and says, I want to stop, and stop the flow of traffic and be able to cross. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Dan Purcell, Corona Del Mar, on the Villagentra. So, I would encourage you to wait until the new Civic Center opens. It's one big variable that doesn't exist. I know, I try to avoid that intersection at MacArthur and San Joaquin, wherever I can, as a pedestrian. It takes you about five minutes to get through that intersection on, not me on my bicycle, I have to avoid that whole intersection. I can be halfway across town before I can actually get across that intersection there on my bike.
You said MacArthur and San Joaquin Hills?
Yeah, San Joaquin, yeah, because just, and we haven't even built the new Civic Center yet. That's where the new bridge is going in, or San Miguel, I'm sorry, San Miguel.
That's all, I just.
San Miguel and MacArthur.
So, but as far as?
It's not the same intersection.
Okay.
But these are where we're starting to have these things pile up, that are, now we're all trying to figure out different routes around things. I try, I find a different route now around that intersection, because I can't get through it. It takes me five minutes to get through that intersection. So, I think it would be better to wait on the improvements with the striping and all that stuff, until the Civic Center opens. But whatever you do is great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on these particular items? All right, now, can we have full council?
Yes, that'd be, that'd be fine.
Well, hold on just a second, I'm sorry. So, I'm leaving with the direction that we have a 3.564 million CIP. It includes moving up $25,000 for CDM, the rest, and the things that Mr. Solich talked about. Bayside Cove, the East Bluff is a grant-funded, Old Newport Boulevard comes up, and that's gonna be what we'll propose for final budget adoption.
Yes.
Okay. Now, I'm done. Sorry. 25 bid, yeah.
Oh, oh, oh. Wait till you see what we did.
Yeah, well, your pizza's. Am I still on?
Yeah. All right, now, we.
Our district's.
Right. General comment on any of the items that we have discussed? Dan, yeah, if you'd like to, did you have a comment?
Other than the CAP.
Yes, other, well, we already took public comment on those.
My name is Dan Wampfo. I live in Newport Coast, and I have for almost 20 years, and served on many different committees and homeowners associations, including the Newport Coast Advisory Council that hasn't.
Dan, can you speak a little more in the microphone?
Yeah, that obviously hasn't met in a few years, and the Newport Coast Committee of 2000 that represented the people in the annexation proceedings. I want to thank you for budgeting the money for the sign, and I know tonight is not the appropriate time to talk about the design, and certainly welcome when that comes up. But, sign's been promised to us multiple times without budgeting, and it's great to hear that it will be budgeted.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on these budget items?
I'm Mayor Gardner and members of the council. My name, again, is Jim Mosher.
Thank you. Is there other public comment on these budget items?
Mayor Gardner, and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I noticed on this summary of the CIP by category, that the largest single item on it is the parks, harbors, and beaches. And in that vein, I just wanted to remind you that we do have a Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, which has since 1955 been charged by our city charter with the responsibility to consider the budget for the parks, the beaches, recreation, and parkways, which I assume includes medians, and street trees, and to make recommendations about those to you, the city council, and to the city manager. I would assume the reason for this is that our citizens regard these amenities as so important to the quality of our life, that we want them to be watched by as many eyes as possible, and to receive more attention and scrutiny than they might otherwise receive if they were just wrapped together with all the other, many budget issues that you have to consider. We also have a planning commission, which is charged with making recommendations to you regarding the rebuilding of blighted and substandard areas of our city. But the recommendations that have just come to you here appear to have arrived by a completely different route. I know you would like to make changes to the procedures that are specified in the charter, but until the voters actually choose a different system, I think it would be good for you, and the city staff, to follow our established rules. I think those rules have fallen to just disuse, more out of ignorance than out of wisdom, and I think the neglect of them has been to our detriment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just briefly, in response, the Charter Section 707, which deals with the Planning Commission, consideration of public improvement projects, as well as blighted areas. I think that Mr. Mosher and Mayor have selectively read portions of that text. The Planning Commission previously did consider the capital improvement program, which is what the Planning Commissions require, require to do, or obligate, or, not even obligated, but charged with doing under the Charter. And so that obligation has been fulfilled. In regards to the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission, they do have the power to consider and make recommendations regarding the budget, but by practice, they've deferred to the city council on that item.
Thank you. Oh, is there further public comment on budget items? Seeing none, and we'll have public comments on closed session agenda items, or closed session of the regular meeting agenda?
Mayor Gardner, and members of the council, my name again is Jim Mosher. I wanted to note that the final item on tonight's regular agenda is the unveiling of an employment agreement with the Newport Beach Firefighters Association, that has apparently been concluded as a result of your long, long negotiations with them in closed session. And I was surprised to see that on the closed session agenda for tonight, as I noted to you in writing, the discussion about the Newport Beach Firefighters Association is still listed as a closed session agenda item. So I'm wondering if this means that you are still in negotiation, and that the agreement that is out in the lobby may not be the one that you finally agreed to. The other item I wanted to comment on, which I've commented on before, is the John Wayne Airport Settlement Agreement. I continue to be disappointed that although it is regarded as a matter of confidential litigation, I continue to see no requests to discuss it listed on the agenda, so I have to assume that you, as a council, are providing no direction to the negotiators. But what I really wanted to say is that on the consent calendar at your meeting two weeks ago, there was an approval of a letter sent to the Mayor of Ontario, supporting his efforts to gain control of the Ontario Airport. What I found interesting is that he is contemplating a governance structure in which the decision-making authority for the Ontario Airport would be shared between the county board of supervisors, and the officials of the cities that are most impacted by it, including Ontario. I would strongly, I don't know what's going on with the negotiations, obviously, since they're confidential, and the public is cut out, but I would strongly urge, seeing if such a governance structure is feasible here. The Orange County Transit Authority might offer a precedent, and having a continuing seat at the table overseeing the airport management would seem to me far preferable than being listened to only every 10 or 20 years. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just briefly, we list all the different unions for labor negotiations, so that there can be appropriate discussion regarding labor negotiations related to all of those unions. I think that, that is appropriate.
Thank you. Any other public comment on closed session agenda items? Seeing none, we will adjourn to closed session.